Okay, let's reconvene if we could have our friends from San Francisco come on up.
Our friends, we like that.
You are?
I know, I know, I know.
And, um... President Rizzo or Chancellor Fisher, I'm not sure who wants to start off here but at your prerogative.
Oh, okay, why don't everybody introduce themselves?
Good afternoon, I'm Anita Greer, Vice President of the Board, City College of San Francisco.
And I'm Count Fisher, the interim Chancellor for City College of San Francisco.
John Rizzo, President of the Board.
Elmo Scott Skilman.
Incoming.
Incoming.
And Jerry, maybe you could bring the other microphone, uh...
The handheld.
The handheld microphone over here.
And I'm sorry, what's your name again, interim chancellor coming in? Elmo Scott Skilman. Elmo, thanks.
I'm handing over the baton to Dr. Scott Skilman on November 1st.
Okay.
So, she was just appointed Tuesday night, so I said, "Guess what your first duty is, you're gonna join us on Thursday." We felt it was important for you to meet her, a lot of you know her, but also for her to hear the dialogue that happens today in terms of continuity.
Okay. Thank you, I'm just gonna give some introductory remarks and Chancellor Fisher will have the details. I just want to say though, first, that the staff and the board has been doing an enormous amount of work. The board met six times in August alone, I think four times in September, I don't remember May and June, but a lot. So, we've been working a lot. We've accomplished a lot, we've accomplished more than people said we would in the, since June when we got the accreditation report. Um, I, um, Dr. Fisher will tell you, but in the past six weeks, we cut 1.5 million dollars in reassigned time in six weeks. So, we're really moving at a rapid pace and I'll, we'll go into that, but, you know, first, I wanna, I want to give you a little background about myself. So, I ran for this, for this position because of fiscal issues six years ago. And Art Brizone, a Republican local TV host, called me a fiscal conservative at one point. Now, that can get you in a lot of trouble in San Francisco, but I think it's indicative of where, you know, my angle coming from there. And when I first got on there, we had, you know, I was on the bond oversight committee and I was not liking what I saw, that the reports were marketing brochures. There was no mention of almost 200 million dollars of, you know, cost overruns. And then we had the big blow up with the scandal, the corruption scandal. But, you know, one of the, one of the things that I was really insistent on was a performance audit of the, of the capital program. And it was, it was a lot like the FICMAT report, but on our capital program. And it found just some horrendous things, it found, you know, 40 million dollars of unapproved expenses, expenses not approved by the board and a whole slew of things. And, and we fixed it. We took multiple audits and, and looks and the last two buildings were not over budget at all. So, that's just kind of a background. I'm, I'm very supportive and I really like outside, outside expertise. This is why I was very enthusiastic about FICMAT and we made this decision in May before we got the report. And I was very, you know, I was actually very supportive of the special trustee as an outside expertise because it, you know, it worked, in my experience, with the construction program, getting things back on track. So, the board, the unfunded retiree liability, we, we first learned about it, you know, not too long ago, a year or so ago. And the, the board was really insistent that we start doing something about it. So, last year's budget, we, we put in half a million dollars towards that and before that, there was nothing. This year's budget, we also put in half a million dollars, nowhere near where we have to go, but we felt as board members that we have to start, we have to start somewhere before we get up to that 7 million and then perhaps above annually. So, the same as the reserve. The reserve, I have not liked taking, I have always objected to taking money out of the reserve and some of the board members did as well. But it's what the administration was recommending, they said it's the only way we can balance the budget. That's why the board went along, but, you know, this year, I think it was in May, the board passed a resolution that any, any new money that came, like if our sales tax, we have some sales tax income, or tax revenue was more than expected, more than budgeted for it, would go into the reserve, not into the budget, but into the reserve. And so, we're, you know, committed to that, I think that's very serious to have the reserve as small as it is. The special trustee, this was a very unusual meeting when we passed the special trustee. We had, there were people who were protesting this. And they were very loud and they had a large banner. And they started shouting, they started shouting and chanting. At one point, they surrounded the board and chanted, told us all to resign, they were shouting, "Resign, resign, resign." But we passed it, we passed the special trustee anyway. I think if we can pass something like that, a hard decision, in that kind of a environment, I think, I think, I don't know, that says something about our, our board. In, in, when we, we have approved our, our plan, our special report for the accreditation agency and it's being finalized, but the board has approved it and it's got, I think it's pretty good, it spells out everything. And we've also accomplished some of the things that the accreditation agency wanted, not just planned for it, but they've done. One of the things I pushed Chancellor Fisher for was, "Let's get, let's get the review of the, our board policies." There were three dozen board policies and I pushed and pushed and pushed because she was, she was, she had nothing else to do. But we did it, we did it, we, we passed it. And, um, and it's, when we passed our plan, not everyone was happy with that, there was pressure, we were getting outside pressure, inside pressure. We have in there a line that says, "We will," I don't remember the exact language, "But we will reduce the number of, of department chairs." And that, you know, there was, people were upset with that, but we, we did it anyway. And I'm not saying we're gonna do everything that, that people hate, and, but I think we are very serious about this as a board and we are making tough decisions and I think we're moving very rapidly. So, that's, that's just the setup for the chancellor, so.
Chancellor.
Well, yes, President Havelstein, members of the board, chancellor and staff and colleagues, we are actually happy to be with you today and to be able to get to tell our story in our words. I think that's always an important thing, especially when you're going through a time of crisis. For those of you don't know me, I spent 35 years in the community college system, tried to retire about six years ago, didn't quite work. But I've been working with colleges all across the country, actually, for the last half a dozen years, probably worked with 40 or 50 colleges in various roles. I interviewed with this board at the request of a colleague on April 28th and came to work for them on May 2nd. I was told at the time that they had a major fiscal crisis, that namely we needed to cut 14 million dollars by June 30th. Not gonna be easy, there'd been some work done, there's still a lot of work left to do. I have to say in all honesty, the word accreditation never came up in that interview. So, I came to work in May, we went to work on the fiscal crises and fast forward, as President Rizzo's pointed out, by June, with the collaboration of our constituent groups, our labor unions, our administrators and other decisions, it was not all by labor by any means, we made the cuts we needed to do to create the balanced budget for 1213. But after being there only for a couple of year, a couple of years, it feels like a couple of years, a couple of weeks, I became aware that we were due an accreditation report, that they'd been there in March, and I said, "Well, where's the draft?" Well, nobody had a draft. The draft was then sent to me shortly thereafter, you know, "You get to review it for errors of fact." So, I took it to my senior administrators, only one of whom was senior. We had five senior administrators, four were interims and very new to their roles, which complicated some of the work that needed to be done, needless to say. They reviewed it and said, "Yes, it's mostly true." And I said, "Okay, if it's mostly true, we are in trouble." And that was middle of May. So, I started to talk with, with my board members as well as the staff on campus and say, "Folks, we got a problem, we better start working on it right now." As time passed, I realized just how bad it would be and, and fully expected, quite frankly, fully expected, the decision that we got on July 3rd. However, that decision on July 3rd was a bombshell for City College of San Francisco. We're a very proud institution that has served millions of students over the years and even in this current year serves around 90,000 students. And remember, we're a district of only 850,000 people. So, everybody knows City College, either they go, or a family member goes, or at the very farthest removed, the neighbor goes. So, we're, we are an integral part of everyone's life and we're proud of that. They love our college, they come to us, they expect a lot from us. And when the bombshell came, it was devastating for everyone, for our staff, for our students, for our community, for our political leaders. And I mention that because of your very good questions about what can others learn from this process. Yes, there's a whole book in this story, I might add, but one of the things you learn is that those kind of, that kind of decision has implications and reverberations that are far broader than what you might think. So, as we addressed the concerns from the commission, we also had to address the concerns of our community, of our students, who wanted to know, "Do I come back to school in, in August?" I mean, it was as basic as that. So, somewhere along the line, some of us have gotta put some things together in terms of how to help other colleges, heaven forbid, that have to go through this process. After July 3rd, at least some people didn't think I was quite so crazy, others may still think that today. But most, many people came around after they got past the anger and the denial to say, "We gotta fix it." And lots of people stepped forward to fix it. I'm not gonna tell you that we are a college, are in a community that totally believes that we deserved what we got because there's a lot of people who think we don't. But what I have tried to point out to them is that the commission, the accrediting commission, is made up of us, people just like us, our peers. And the commission told City College six years ago to fix eight major things. And when they came in March, they found that we had addressed five of them, but not well, and three of them not at all. In addition, they found other problems, problems that we did not report in our own self-evaluation. So, there are some of the lessons that you learn. When you do that, you can pretty much, that's why I knew we were in trouble. When you do that, the commission says, "You've lost something in, by way of integrity," and that's what they put in their decision letter. Fortunately, since that decision came out, they were very specific and helpful, as has been Chancellor Skinner and Chancellor Scott before him, as well as other staff, to help us. I really believe that the whole world wants us to succeed. And I know you do, because you don't wanna have to run our college and we don't want you to either. So, that's, what we wanna share with you today is some of the things that President Rizzo shared, but also try to explain how we got to where we are and therefore what we're doing to fix it. Sitting through the FICMAT review this last hour and a half was a bit painful, even though I've read the document a half a dozen times and was a part of that two and a half hour discussion last month. I'll take issue with a couple of things that were said and we can share that as we go along. But when I'm asked to give an elevator speech about how in the heck did a college as wonderful as City College of San Francisco get into this mess, my quick answer is this. The college had a very big heart, tried to do a lot for a lot of people. That lot of people included the city of San Francisco, the students of the college, and also its own staff. And by staff, I mean all of us. The college was very generous to all the above. In 1992, and about that time, shortly after AB 1725 had passed, the college had a new chancellor. And someday, an historian will write this and they may disagree with what I'm saying, but here's my assessment. The new chancellor rewrote the way the college was gonna be governed, changed a lot of practices, put a lot of things in place that at the time, I'm sure everyone thought looked very good. As it turned out, it led to a lot of the issues that are in the accreditation commission report. We also had a, there's another chancellor who came in for a short time, and then the third chancellor who came in on board essentially funded to a much greater extent the kinds of things that were already in place. All of which was fine while you had money. And by the way, the city of San Francisco taxes itself to support us, that's probably a foreign concept for many of you. We get 14 million dollars a year from the city of San Francisco's sales tax. If we had not gotten that money, we probably would've been sitting here a lot long ago. So, that's what's been holding it together. As you heard those FICMAT numbers, you wonder, "Well, how did they do it for that long?" That's why, that, that was the cushion that helped us. But I also like to say to people in that short version, we set up as a, as an institution, some structural issues that led to the poor decisions that you've been asking about this afternoon. The accrediting commission zeroed in on a number of those and made 14 recommendations of things we needed to change. Of those 14 recommendations, only two are fiscal. So, even though the attention, both in the press and the community and places like this, has been on fiscal, you need to know there were 12 other recommendations that had to do with how we're organized, how we operate, how we make decisions, how we govern ourselves, and some just plain things that we needed to do that we haven't, hadn't done and that we were told to do six years ago and hadn't done. Now, the good news in all that is, if you fix the structural issues, then you can make better decisions and you can keep this from ever happening again. Yes, our board will have to make very hard fiscal choices and they're not gonna be easy and they're not gonna be popular, but they're gonna be necessary to save the college. And yes, we're gonna need the collaboration and assistance of all our constituency groups, senators and unions alike. That's all gonna be a part of that plan. But if we don't change the structural components, just making those fiscal decisions alone won't save us. We'll be back in, it's my professional opinion, we'll be back in the same position again in the foreseeable future, not the long-term future. If you read the commission's report carefully, even the intro to the FICMAT report spends a lot of pages talking about the context and, and the situation we're in and how we, the culture, if you will. As people have told me, and I feel like I've got at least a piece of my heart, no pun intended, forever in San Francisco, but there's San Francisco values, and there are values of which we're all very proud. But there are values that sometimes get in the way of making tough decisions. And the example that President Rizzo gave you about the special trustee is a good example. From the beginning, we have had people in our community say that the commission report was a part of a far-right, mean conspiracy designed to take us down because we are so liberal. And there are people who will fight you to the death right now and tell you that that's how it is. Tried to counter that, but that's part of our culture. The protests were part of our culture, a part I could've dealt without, done without, I will admit, but never thus a part of our culture. I was proud of our board that they voted yes on the special trustee, and I say this in front of my two colleagues here, I'd have been even more proud if they'd voted two weeks before, when it was in front of them. If they'd done that, we wouldn't have had the scene that we had two weeks later. They did that in order to try to acquire a unanimous vote of the board. We waited two weeks, we got three hours of protests, and we didn't get a unanimous vote. So, that is a, a little bit of a clue to what we are up against as we move forward. We have done, very unscientific term here.
It was 6 to 1, no?
It was 6 to 1, but it was, and it was, well, I'll just let it go, it was 6 to 1, yes. But we have done a ton of work, as, as you have heard. We, another controversy we had was revisiting our mission statement. We were told in no uncertain terms to revisit our mission statement. We had dozens and dozens of people, both staff and community, coming and talking about, "Please don't change our statement, please, please don't change our mission statement." We tried to model it after best practices, after what the law says, that was our guiding principle, and also what the accreditation commission recommends in terms of looking at achievement and outcomes. We think it's a very good compromise statement, but there was a lot of opposition to it. The board did pass that, I don't recall if that was unanimous, I think it may have been, maybe it been another 6-1, but at least it was passed. We've, we've done that, we've done the policy reviews that trustee Rizzo talked about, we revisited our planning process. And for the first time ever, we're doing program review that will take into account the possibility of program decline. At City College, program review was to talk about growth, not decline. We're talking about both and justification. We have closed, as of January, we are closing three smaller sites, the Castro site, two Presidio Park sites. And we will also, board's hearing this for the almost first time right now, St. Mary's site. The centers themselves, the big centers, receive foundation grants from the state. There is a very in-depth analysis going on to see how cost-effective that is. They serve a lot of people, they are a big part of who we are, probably serve around a third of the students that we serve. So, the idea that we can just close a center and everything will be fine, it's not nearly that simple. But what we are trying to do is say, "That other 100 sites that we have out there all over the city, let's bring them into the centers. Let's, let's make sure the center is at full capacity in terms of site utilization. Let's make sure our classes are at full capacity. Let's make sure that John Adams Center isn't competing with Evans." I mean, we have all kinds of silo issues that we have brought down greatly, just literally in the last six weeks. We've already moved to make some changes in the administrative structure. The, we have gone from five vice chancellors to three. One of them was already permanent, the other to our interim, one is over here, so now we have to replace her. But we are starting the permanent searches, or the searches for the permanent vice chancellors as we speak. A big piece of that administrative structure, and this is a very sensitive topic, so I, I fully recognize that and, and know that there's lots of people listening as I say this. They, accrediting commission and the FICMAT report was a bit stronger on the language, with all due respect to what Joel shared earlier. That the, every group from the outside that has come in to work with us, every consultant that I've brought in to help us, and we've had, we've had four of us as retired CEOs working at City College for the last two months. Everyone has come to the same conclusion that the department chair structure that we have at our college, that works very well, faculty love it, they're very happy with it. The reality is, a great deal of the decision-making in this college was in the hands of the department chairs, which in itself doesn't sound that bad, these are, these are wonderful, good people, nobody's questioning that. But they are in fact faculty, they are in fact faculty, they're not in the classroom and they're, and they were responsible, almost 95%, if not higher, for the production of our schedule and decisions around our schedule. They did not know the practice of enrollment management, and for that matter, neither did the deans or others. So, enrollment management, they all know what that is now, and they've all been through a lot of training within the last couple of months on that topic. But what, what FICMAT and others found is that the department chair structure and the coordinators that go along with some of it is the equivalent of 50 full-time faculty, 50 full-time faculty. And there's another 25 full-time faculty on reassigned time for other things. So, the amount of time, and that's why FICMAT talks about 14, 15% of our faculty are on reassigned time. That's something we can't afford, number one, and it's not a good use of their talents, number two. But as an administrator coming in, was particularly challenging because many of the decisions that needed to be made, needed to be made at the administrative level, were difficult, if not impossible, to make because of the culture that said, "You don't make those decisions." I was told early on, in May, I was concerned about enrollment, I said, "I don't think you're gonna make your target. Didn't make it last year, one year grace, you gotta make it next year, gotta make it next year." First thing out of my mouth that first week, "Prove to me you're gonna make it next year." They couldn't do that. So, we started talking about enrollment management and so forth and so on. And quickly, I said, "You need to add classes for spring," or, excuse me, for summer. You've gotta beef up summer, you've got to make your base or the fiscal situation, you all know that. And I was told, "No, the chairs leave in eight days and they don't, there's not time to do that." And I said, "Well, there is time and they need to give us their recommendations now. If they don't, the deans will do it." And I was told, "No, they can't, deans can't put things in the schedule, only the department chairs." And that's when I knew that you guys had gotten me into a lot hotter water than I was aware of. I said, "What do you mean?" And anyway, long story short, it was the beginning for me of a revelation about how decisions get made in the institution. Now, that's history. Are we doing it differently now? Yes, we are doing it differently. We have already, I'd like to say we have one and a half million this year, it will be a one and a half million next year. But we made the decisions this year, we'll get a half a year's credit out of those decisions. We started to reduce the reassigned time. We are in, the board passed a resolution, it actually was one recommendation in the accreditation report, but it was actually, the action came out of specific actions that I asked them to make last Thursday night. And one of them was to come back with an administrative structure that gave more administrative oversight and authority and accountability to make the hard decisions and in the process, reduce that, the expenditures on the department chair structure. And more recently, they've given me the goal of be sure we reduce it at least to equate to a savings of $2 million.
So, so I'm confused, but it hasn't been done?
The, there's two pots here. There's people who are on reassigned time, that it's strictly a management right, that decision's been made.
Right.
It'll, it takes effect in January, so we get half the savings, next year, we get the full. A different issue, another group of reassigned time, is the whole department chair structure, that has not been done. That's, I've been given the general authority and direction to create the plan, but that plan has to come back to them ideally the end of October and, and get a formal action.
So, President Rizzo, will that authority, in your view, or Vice President Greer, be placed with the deans, or it's not clear yet?
I don't, I don't think it's clear yet at this point.
Well, I think he's asking, "Are you going to endorse the plan that you told me to come and create, last Thursday you'd asked me to create?"
Oh, yeah.
I think that's, I think that's the question.
If that's what you're asking, yeah.
Absolutely.
Right, okay, so... Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, and so that's a really, that's a really big issue, that's one of many. As I said, we've taken care of the planning. I wanna really give credit to the faculty on, one of the recommendations was, had to do with student learning outcomes. Some folks have done a good job, but not everybody had. The faculty has jumped in wholeheartedly and under the direction of the academic senate president, Karen Saginaw in particular, and with the support, actually, it was the AFT president that proposed that we take an extra flex day this, this year with about three weeks' notice, and we all agreed to that. And then working with the senate, put together a full-day activity where everyone worked on SLOs. I don't think there's anybody, unless they've been buried in a cave, that doesn't now know what an SLO is. Now, problem is, we needed to have done that a long time ago, but we have done it. And I, to me, it shows what you can do to bring, we brought together 1,000 faculty in the gym, the only place we can get them all together, had some great training and, and keynoters, and then went to work on it. I use that just as a sample. That's been happening in a lot of other areas. We've revisited our participatory governance policy, trying to use the correct terms these days. We will be bringing to the board a new policy with respect to that. Basically, what you found in the commission report and others is that we had, in the spirit of democracy, had created a town hall of 2,500, which didn't work real well. And then in some cases, went to a procedure that involved a very small group of people. And in many cases, what needed to get done just didn't get done. But that is happening now, and that's the main thing I wanna share with you, that is absolutely happening now. But as the board makes those tough decisions in the next few months, I have a feeling that what we heard in that one protest is only the beginning. Some of them, many of the decisions, as you've probably guessed, will be in the collective bargaining arena, so we won't be talking about those in public. But there are a number of things that we need to deal with in terms of collective bargaining to have our, our promises, our commitments to our staff be fair, but be sustainable. And that's gonna be the challenge. I think that the special trustee that your office appoints is very critical, that that person understands the big picture and is able to help our board and our new CEO do what they need to do and be objective about that, I think that's gonna... be objective about that. I think that's gonna be a very important thing that, toward our road to recovery. But we are, we are well on our way. So, with that, I'll stop and later we can answer whatever questions you want. Like, I think Dr. Greer would like to make some comments.
Dr. Greer, would you like to say anything, or?
I just have a short comment to make. I agree a hundred percent with Dr. Fisher's information that she gave you, an update of the report, and also what trustee Rizzo was saying as well. In terms of the hard work that the board is doing, one of the things that hasn't come out, and I think it's very important, because it speaks to one of the items that was on the accreditation report, and that was that the board of trustees worked together. What we have done so far is that we've embraced the problem. We have accepted the problem, and we've been working on a plan to address the problem. One of the results of what we've done will be the report that President Fisher, Chancellor Fisher, turns in to the ACCJC?
Okay.
And, well, the accreditation team. What we also have agreed on is that we're very concerned about student success, and we understand that student success cannot happen unless the board makes sure that it happens, that we are working together, that we do what's best for our college and for our students, and we've taken that pledge to do that. We have been able to, an example of what we've been able to do, is we use the time in order to hire Pam Fisher in terms of being our chancellor. We did this in a little amount of time because we were, we knew what we needed to do. And then we also knew that she was going to leave us, and so therefore we hired Dr. Skilman, and we did that in a short period of time. It didn't take what we usually do in terms of disagreeing and putting off things. And I think we're on a roll here, and I would hope that you would give us the chance to prove that we can work collaboratively, that we are all on the same page, and it's just important that we save City College. So, thank you for allowing us to come and give you this report.
Well, we certainly agree we need to save City College. There's no doubt about that. Hearing all of you speak, I am heartened, as you say, Dr. Greer, that you've embraced the problem in our, in a position now where you are facing it head-on, and that's definitely what has to happen here. And I'm well aware, these issues are not easy. Collective bargaining is not easy, and penetrating silos are not, not easy. But the first step in that is understanding that it has to be done if we are gonna save City, City College. So, I want to give my colleagues a chance to ask questions, but before we do that, because we may have a couple of members who need to, need to leave here. On our agenda is one action item, and that is the appointment of a special trustee for City College of San Francisco. And Eric, correct me if I'm wrong here. This is something that the Board of Governors does in collaboration with the City College of San Francisco. You all have already taken an action to approve that. Our office through the chancellor has developed a short list of individuals that will be, one of which will be placed at City College of San Francisco. But I want to make sure the board has an opportunity to, to vote on this. We could, members, we could really do this one of two ways, and I'm gonna recommend one of them. One is that we would need to call a, another special meeting and actually vote on who that individual is. My recommendation and preferred method would be for us to delegate that authority to our chancellor, our acting chancellor, because it does need to happen sooner rather than later. And I certainly trust the judgment of Eric and the, and staff in working with City College that they're able to, to do that. So, at this point, before we lose any, any members, I'd like to have a motion to-
Yeah, I'll move to authorize the chancellor to appoint a special trustee.
Second. Second by Vice President Baca. All those in favor?
I would only suggest, there may not be any, but if there is public comment on this action, it would be appropriate for you to see if there is any-
Is there any public comment on this action?
And do we have a list?
No.
Yes, I know the chancellor's office has developed a, a list of folks. I think what we're doing here is authorizing the chancellor and the office to make that, to make that selection.
And once that appointment is made, how will it be communicated to the, to the board of governors?
Eric?
We'll provide notification to, to the board.
With some background on the individual.
With background on the individual and the process and timing.
Correct. And then what, just before we go, what is the charge to this special trustee?
It might be a good time to just briefly step through a couple of points. One is the, so the, the special trustee, I think something that's worth noting is that there are actually a couple of different types of special trustee, different flavors of special trustee, if you will, that have been used in our system over time. And, and the, the version that we proposed for City College of San Francisco and the version that the City College of San Francisco Board requested is what we call a voluntary placement of a special trustee, which the important thing to note here is that in this version of a special trustee, the, the local governing board retains its, its role, its authority to manage the district and to make decisions about the district's budget and, and operation. Now, there's a more severe form of special trustee, which is a, is a state-imposed special trustee in which a local governing board is, is stripped of power and the special trustee takes that, that role. And it's, it's the former version that we think is the best fit for City College and the, and the City College Board has concurred in that. So, that, you know, just wanted to clarify that, and all of that's done under, there's provisions of the education code and Title V regulations that we could provide more background on if necessary.
Do we have the right to go to the more powerful special trustee if we deem it necessary?
Yes, that, that's within the powers of the, of the board. And, and the, the benefits of this lighter version of the special trustee has been that it, it, it is quite disruptive for a local governing board to be stripped of power, not to mention it's just counter to the, the spirit, the history of our system of decentralized local control with local representation through locally elected officials. That's such a part of our fiber that any, any step away from that is only done under the most severe of circumstances. And so, this, this more moderate version of the special trustee has worked well in, at Solano Community College District and Lassen Community College District, when both those districts face show cause. And so, we're hopeful that that's the best fit here as well, and we're, we're actively in the process of recruiting for that position, and we can provide additional information on that process if, if you'd like. I'd, I'd only note that recently enacted legislation, Assembly Bill 178, provided a, a special exemption for, for STIRS retirees to have their, their earnings exempted from the, the normal limits for STIRS retirees. And that's a benefit. It allows us to recruit from a broader set of experienced individuals for the position. But it also requires us to go through some, some posting of the, of the position and some additional hoops that we didn't previously have to go through. So, that's what we're in the midst of now, and I'd, I'd say we're getting towards the end of that recruitment phase. We, we were encouraged that there have been some very, very strong candidates that have stepped forward, and we think it's gonna be possible to identify somebody with deep experience, broad statewide credibility, a real, you know, a, a, a real good fit for the position. And so, we think that that's gonna be an important part of the solution, and we're committed to moving as expeditiously as possible towards that.
And you, you think that's a matter of a couple of weeks, as you agreed with me earlier, correct?
That's, that's correct. The, the posting closes this week. We've got interviews set up next week, and we're, we, we just have to narrow that down, and we will be in dialogue.
November meeting?
Yeah. Well, the, the goal is before that.
Right. What I, what I asked Chancellor Skinner to do, assuming we have that person, it sounds like we will by the end of the month or so, I've asked that, that person appear before our board at the November-
Fifteenth, is it?
November something, fourteen something, meaning Member Belinski.
What's the term of office for this special trustee?
The, it's a, it's an annual, annual appointment. I think AB 178 limits it to a year that can be renewed.
Actually, AB 178 expires June thirtieth, so, so, so hopefully that will be extended so that, that we can continue with the trustee beyond June thirtieth. But, so, so obviously since the, the bill is less, has a life of less than a year, the, the position would be no longer than that. But we have had trustees in the past who have been trustees for, you know, two, three, four years.
So, we have a motion on the floor by Member Baum, seconded by Vice President Baca. Any other comment from members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm sorry, and Jerry, did we need a roll, roll call on that? You mentioned something about that to me. You're okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. We'll take a roll call, vote. I'll, I'll go ahead and do it, and Jerry. Member Baum?
Aye.
Uh, Member Storm?
Aye.
Member Azumi?
Aye.
Uh, Member Belinski?
Aye.
Member Malamed?
Aye.
Member Reed?
Aye.
Vice President Baca?
Aye.
President Himmelstein?
Aye.
Okay, so, members, I'll now open up the floor to questions. Member Azumi?
I want to thank the entire delegation of City College for coming here. I know it's a difficult situation and circumstances, and appreciate your frankness and honesty and your efforts to address all these issues confronting you right now. I just wanted to ask about the, Chancellor Skinner had mentioned that the thing that's facing you the, you know, most immediately is the accreditation issue. And that, you know, from the report that you've given us, you've, you know-
The timeline.
You know, tried to address what the commission has brought up. I'm just wondering, from your own point of view of the, of the things that the commission had brought up in the past and, you know, more recently, I mean, what are, is there one or two or more things that you're most worried about in terms of them looking at and thinking you still haven't addressed?
Well, from my perspective, the toughest ones, I mean fiscal is one, obviously, but next to that, the toughest ones are the ones that had to do with what I was calling the structural issues. How we are organized for future decision-making. Not only what we spend on it, but I didn't say it too much in my introductory comments, but it wasn't, it isn't about numbers. It's about authority, responsibility, accountability. Because when you trace back and you look at, I mean, the reasonable thing for you to sit here and say is, "How did this happen for the last six years? Who was in charge? Who was watching? Who was making decisions? Where's the power? Where's the authority? Where's the accountability?" And there wasn't a lot of any of the above, and I think we're putting, we're trying to change our culture to implement that. It starts with a structure. It starts with new job descriptions, and it starts, and it continues with new mechanisms for ensuring that happens. That will be the toughest one. Half a dozen or so of the fourteen recommendations, we, we're done. We've done them all. Now, we have to keep doing them. We can't slack up on SLOs or reviews or, you know, ongoing whatever. I thought, sure, my colleagues from the board would tell you that one of the recommendations has to do with them and how they perform and prescribe lots of solutions, and they've been doing it. They have been through so much training, they could probably give the training now. And, and one of the first trainings they had was three hours on what's their role with respect to accreditation. And more than one said to me, "If we'd known this two years ago, this wouldn't have happened because I would have known what questions to ask." So, some of those systemic things like that are happening and are already done. But I think changing the culture to come to realize that we're in it together, that we're collaborative, we have collegial governance, we can do all those wonderful things, but eventually, the administration, as spokespeople for the board, have got to make tough decisions and move on and do it on a timely basis. That, along with the fiscal, I see as the two biggest ones. Most of the other ones, we, we've already taken care of.
I, I just, it just occurred to me, one thing that, that this board could do that would be helpful, I think, is to require accreditation training for, for all, I'm serious, all boards in, in the, in the state. Because we, you know, we were clueless, you know, and you require it, you have a, I don't know, a convention in Sacramento or something, and it's required attendance for every board member in the state. I think that would, that would really help.
That's a good thought. I don't know if we have that authority, Steve, Eric, but, but it's, it's a good question to bring back to us.
Yeah. I mean, there's definitely room to, to encourage. We do get in the, in the problem of state mandates if we start requiring-
No, we get to pay our travel.
Right, right. So, Member Baum and Member Malamed?
First, thank you for, for the presentation. I want to have an opportunity to hear from some of the other groups that are gonna be your partners in, in moving the district forward, because as, as the president said, our, we, we will not let City of College of San Francisco fail. We will make sure that that doesn't happen. And if that means us applying, hiring a special trustee with full authority, I think this board is prepared to do that. But I want to hear some reassurances from the leadership, because one of the things I'm alarmed now, that Chancellor Fisher, who apparently has been able to move mountains in about four months, now is, is leaving. And how are we going to keep that momentum going? Because it, it sounds like she's, and President Rizzo, you did a wonderful job setting the stage and talking about your credentials as a fiscal conservative, but then other things that I've heard today make me concerned about the credibility of the board to make the fiscal, physically conservative decisions. When, when I hear that you, you were adopted budgets, that you had to dip into reserves to balance the budget. That's not a physically conservative or sound practice. And I know what, how, how it is a trustee. I know what it's like when a group of protestors circles the board and tries to disrupt and force you and not be able to, to act. And it's not a pleasant experience, but, and you don't always need a majority. You need a working majority on the board. And so, that's, I think sometimes we get hung up on the fact that we need a unanimous board to move forward. You need a working majority of the board to move, move forward. And then also, when I heard from Joel saying that for five years, there were significant findings in, in audits that were, were not addressed. That is not a physically conservative path. When, in my district, if there's a finding, you take it very seriously, and if it's there next year or the year after that, the board helps, holds the district accountable for addressing those findings because we want clean audits. And, and so, I'd like to hear from, from you how, and, and, and our new chancellor that will be coming on board perhaps to have an opportunity to say how we're going to keep the, the foot on the pedal and moving forward, because it's, and then also, if there's an opportunity for some of the shared governance groups as, or the collective bargaining units to express to the Board of Governors that we are part, that, that you are a united team going forward to, to make some of the difficult decisions. Because if there's any, any one of those groups can derail the entire process and then we'll be in a world of hurt. So.
Dr. Scott Skilman has a, she came better prepared than me. She has a list, maybe she's looking forward to how she's gonna hold the board's feet to the fire as we move forward. And so, there is, there are several things I asked the board to approve in the last couple of weeks that will help with your question. I can't speak to the past, but only the future, and you might want to speak to that.
Sure. Thank you. First of all, I, I just want you to know, I would not have taken on this responsibility had I not been given the assurances. And that's an assessment on my own page with regards to where this board was, in regards to the current situation, as well as certainly the, the various constituent groups. Now, with that said, I do understand that, you know, there are going to be, you know, different camps with regards to a number of different issues. But I have been seven weeks in, at San Francisco City College, and it's very clear to me that- And, um, it's very clear to me that, uh, not only the board, but certainly the, the constituent groups have indeed embraced the reality of the situation. And with that said, uh, the amount of progress that has been made since the accreditation report was released by WASP back in, uh, June, it's just unbelievable. I, I have been in our system for forty years, and I just recently retired, okay?
She failed too.
So, I, yeah, I failed. But there, the, the amount of energy and attention that has been placed on this board and the constituent groups told me that it's a, a place where, given the skills, given my experience and my interests with regards to community colleges in California, that there is a roadmap that has to take place. And with that said, in September, on the eighteenth, this board, the San Francisco City College Board actually created those priorities and the plan to be able to move forward, uh, beyond where Chancellor Fisher has laid the foundational pieces. I can, I can identify several of them. I won't, you know, put them all out there certainly because of time, but I, uh, I can identify a few of them. Putting students first by using data related to student needs. And by the way, with regards to the technology piece, the, the district and the board has certainly indicated that, that has to, to take place. That, uh, the technology piece has to be enhanced. Um, continue to implement and assess strategies to close student achievement gaps where identified underrepresented students, to strengthen excellence in teaching and learning and support services through a focus on student learning outcomes, achievements, uh, student goal completion. Those are areas that were specified within the accreditation report. Uh, implement all the, the actions included in the accreditation report of October fifteenth and March fifteenth to ensure that City College retains its accreditation. It is first and foremost that that be addressed. And to, to see in a relatively short period of time the efforts that went into addressing the fourteen recommendations plus the prior recommendations is, is remarkable. Um, focus on increasing productivity in, in, um, all FTS generating programs. I, I just attended another enrollment management meeting this morning that has, uh, it has progressed unbelievable in the last month in terms of the education process of all the faculty and, and department chairs. So there, there's a lot of momentum behind this, and it's all for the.
Really quickly, just rather than going through each of those, how are you going to be pushing that forward personally and making sure everybody is moving together?
We have our benchmarks that we're setting. Uh, we certainly are in terms of the collaboration, um, making sure that communication-wise, all groups are informed. And there, there are going to be some tough decisions made, uh, and working with the board directly to ensure that, that we're able to continue moving forward, uh, to, to be able to, uh, to advance the, the planning efforts that the board has actually identified. Uh, I, I want to make sure that the special trustee is on board as soon as possible. I'm looking forward to that individual so that we can work directly with the board and, and, you know, create the calendar that's needed and identify specifically the challenges that we have as they relate specifically to the board's priorities to be able to address both the accreditation as well as the fiscal matters.
We might jump in and say that that plan that the board adopted all has timelines. Every single activity, it says in there, it'll be done by this time, by that time. And so, the board will be having on every one of its agenda an update. Okay, this really happened, this really happened. I know that Dr. Scott Skilman will be on it, on top of it, but the board's going to be on top of it too. And knowing, did that happen? If it didn't happen, why didn't it happen? What are you going to do to fix it? We only have three months basically left, when you take out the holidays. So there, there wasn't really, the reports due October fifteenth. Originally, I told them they could take one day off because I'm here through the end of the month. But October sixteenth, the steering committee is meeting to get back in gear and say, okay, now what are the next steps? What else has to be done and who's good, who's taking responsibility for it?
And, and I might also add the self-evaluation, uh, that we have to do for March fifteenth. Essentially, we're starting all over. We're examining every single aspect with reference to the standards.
Let me, let me, let me just interrupt here. Member Baum, have you, do you have any other, uh, uh, comments? Let me just, uh, I agree with Member Baum's comments and just getting a sense that your foot will be on the pedal. Um, as Chancellor Fisher's has. So, uh, let me hang, hang on one, one, one second. Uh, uh, we, I had Member Malayamad, Vice President Baca. Let's let our chancellor make one short comment first, and then President Rizzo, I'll.
Very brief, and I, and Member Baum, this relates to your question about the, um, you know, getting assurance that progress we've made. That, that special trustee, a very important power of the special trustee that I didn't articulate before, is the ability to stay and rescind actions. And so, the, if the board, if the City College Board is, is, um, set to take an action that would depart from that recovery plan that they just spoke about, the special trustee, which is your, your representative there, they have the ability to step in and block the action. And so, it, it's, it's a, it's a way that, you know, we, we've increased, that you, you will have increased accountability in that local circumstance. And it's an important support, I think, to that local board as they face difficult decisions. And that, that's a component of that special trustee that I think, uh, is worth noting.
President Rizzo and then Member Malayamad.
Let me just say that when the newspaper broke the story of allegations of money laundering with three administrators, the board immediately called for an external independent investigation towards it. He, they were, all three of them were gone. Oh, this is two thousand and seven, sorry.
I wanted to think that just happened.
Yeah, no, two thousand and seven. I, I'm just talking about the board. And, you know, he was gone eight months later. Um, we got the report, um, we implemented immediately everything that was recommended in there. It wasn't good enough. We did another internal report, which we sent to Jack Scott when it was done. And, um, uh, you know, the audit, the, the, the performance audits, multiple audits of the construction program did not come from the administration. They were fighting it, they were opposing it. It came from the board, it came from the board. Um, the, the, I personally wrote several of the, or many of the two dozen policy reforms to, to fix the construction program. And I think saving, uh, you know, something like twenty, thirty million dollars of taxpayer money is, is a great accomplishment. Um, the other thing is, we learned, well, first of all, let me, let me say, our, our chancellor this year unexpectedly retired in April. He had a brain tumor the size of a quarter. So he had had this brain tumor, who, who knows how long. He, he, his, his performance certainly this year, many people reported was not, you know, his normal self. That said, we learned, um, in the spring that our budget called for one point nine million dollars in, um, cuts to classrooms, classes, class sections eliminated. And then we learned that, well, you know, the district didn't make one point nine million dollars worth of cuts. It made less, it made fewer. That caused a huge problem at the end of the year. And, um, so, you know, that's totally unacceptable. And, um, you know, an administrator was demoted because of that. So, I just wanted to, to just give some of this background that, that we, we don't just sit, sit back and we haven't. We have a little bit of a history of, of holding administrators accountable, so.
Member Malayamad.
Um, I want to learn a little bit more about the classified employees and some of those issues. Because I've read in this, um, paper that they have different rules, and I'm kind of wondering, you know, that, because of the City of San Francisco. I'm wondering, um, are you feeling like, well, can you give me more, can you, can you educate me more about that issue and how you will deal with it? I guess is what I'm asking.
So, so, let me, uh, because I have the same, um, question. So you, you notice in your packet, it's, it's interesting in that the classified, uh, workforce of the City of San Francisco actually has, for lack of a better term, seniority benefits that, uh, that they can transfer into City College. At least that's how it's described.
They're, they're part, yeah.
So, 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 so in, in other words, it limits the boards and the chancellor's choice of who, who actually is, is, is coming in. But maybe you can explain it a little bit better.
Well, they're part of civil service, yeah. City of, City County of San Francisco's is civil service, and SEIU is part of that. Our classified staff are part of the City of County of San Francisco's union. They're part of the same union. So they do, they have bumping rights back and forth. And some of the, some of the provisions of their contract, particularly as it relates to lifetime health benefits and things like that, are set by the city. We don't have control over that. And yes, our people, our people can bump their people, but their people can bump our people. So we are part, we are very intertwined with the City and County of San Francisco, unlike most of our sister colleges across the state. Um, it's also true that we are a part of the City and County of San Francisco's charter, which is in the Constitution of California's, is in California's constitution, and in some cases, preempts the ed code. So there's some things that we can't do or we have to do differently. For example, our new trustees come on board in January, not in December. When we lost a trustee tragically died here a couple of months ago, this board had no choice in the matter. The mayor appoints a replacement. So there are a number of things about how we're run that are different. Back to SEIU, I mean, you know, people are used to living with that, we live with it. Does it hamper us a little bit? Yes, but that's not the real issue. The real issue is, in the SEIU, the thick mat report had to do with some of the contract provisions that were collectively bargained, like a work week of thirty-seven and a half hours instead of forty. That's one of the ones they point out. There's some other, other issues in there that have happened over the years that are, they're perks, they're benefits. And like somebody said earlier, that's, job of the union is to get the best you can get, and that's what they did. So some of those, those are examples of the kinds of things which each of our unions have, just back on the collective bargaining table. If, if it was something this board or previous boards negotiated, it can be renegotiated. If it's something that's in the city charter or in the city classifieds or civil service, that's hands-off, we can't touch it. So is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Yes, and I guess the other part of my question is, is, are the classified employees a group that you are perhaps going to need to decrease in size, increase in size, keep the same? Um, and, and when people come into the college who haven't worked at the college, is that an easy transition for them? Is it all about their skills or is it a hard transition? Just to get a sense of it.
That's a different question, that last one, I, I'm not sure where to go with that one.
Well, I'm just trying to get a sense of it.
Well, the, the accreditation report said that we were understaffed with classified. Big Matt said we were about average.
Okay.
So there, so that's an issue. We have lost lots of classified staff in the last year or so because of attrition, and we didn't fill the positions. The conversations I've started with the representatives of their union is that we're going to need to look at reallocating human resources, their members, in terms of where they are in the district. And it kind of gets back to that bigger question about the centers too. Can we afford to have all of the staff at centers or not? Or if, you, you know how it is with attrition. One office or one department may have lost six people, another department lost one. Well, do you leave it that way or do you start moving people around? Do they need retraining? We've already started conversations about, do we need to retrain some of our people so that we can move them where we most need them? Right now, we don't have a lot of money to hire anybody new. So that's, that's the direction we're headed is, except where we're severe positions. You'd probably be pleased to know, I've approved three new positions in the fiscal unit of our institution. It was desperately needed. And I've also, the board, I, the board, yes, well, they were already vacant, so I could do that one. The board approved two new positions in the research, planning and data area, again, so we could respond to accrediting commissions. But those are anomalies. Essentially, we have a high, a quasi-hiring freeze, and that'll have to be true for classified as well.
Okay, that helps me. And I did want to thank you for coming here because all I've learned, besides my board meeting, is from the newspaper. So it is very helpful to hear it from you and hear what good work you're doing, so thank you.
Vice President Baca.
Yeah, indeed, thank you for coming. Uh, I don't have so much a question as I have maybe an observation and comment. Um, and, and it may, may not be necessary, particularly with the three, three trustees present here today, but, uh, many of us are familiar with the talent of, uh, Dr. Fisher, Dr. Skilman, and I have no doubt the tremendous talent in, in the City College of San Francisco. But it just seemed to me that, that, that the decision that you made with regard to the trustee may be the, the easiest of decisions that you'll be making over, over the next few weeks and months. Uh, but given, given that you attempted to try to get you, uh, unanimous position on that and failed, is an indicator that maybe the unity quite isn't there. But I would just simply, uh, try to reinforce as, as much as possible the need to, to have that. And Member Baum was, in some ways, addressing that, that, uh, of course, we all recognize that unity, uh, among the leadership and in support of those who are actually proposing and developing the tough decisions is an essential part of the whole process. So I wish all of you a great deal of luck, and I will be looking forward to, to, you know, positive progress. So, thank you again for being here today.
Okay, with, uh, that, uh, I will also thank all of you for being here today, for being forthright and willing to challenge these, uh, uh, difficult issues. Rest assured, we are, are there for support, but as you heard expressed from, from, uh, board members, we also have very high expectations of you and are going to hold you to those high expectations because we like you, are very, very concerned for the students of, of City College of San Francisco. I wish you the best of, uh, best of luck. As some, I think Joel said before, you do need some good luck in this, uh, as well. And we thank you for the hard work so far and the tough issues that, um, that you had to face. So I trust that Chancellor Skinner will keep us all informed as this, uh, moves along, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we do have public comment. Vice President Baca.
Uh, we have two members of the public wishing to address the, the board. And again, I, uh, will remind the speakers that they are limited to three minutes. Carl Friedlander, the Community College Council and CFT.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Carl Friedlander. I'm president of the Community College Council of the California Federation of Teachers. AFT Local 2121, the local representing faculty at City College of San Francisco, is one of the locals that comprise CFT's Community College Council. All of us in CFT are deeply concerned about the June decision by ACCJC to put City College of San Francisco on show cause. We know that there are many serious challenges that the district must address and are confident that they will do so. We are all here today to discuss those challenges. But I believe the commission's decision to issue the most severe of sanctions to an institution which, after its last accreditation cycle six years ago, received several recommendations, but no sanction, was misguided. The Board of Governors should understand that huge segments of the California Community College system believe, though reluctant to publicly express it, that the decisions of ACCJC regarding institutional sanctions tend to be overly severe and even adversarial. And after several years of deep budget cuts, we fear that a dozen California community colleges facing fiscal stresses comparable to San Francisco's could join City College of San Francisco on the list of institutions required by the commission to show cause. Regardless of these concerns, the City College of San Francisco community is putting its collective shoulder to the wheel to address all of the recommendations made by ACCJC. It's a huge undertaking. to the wheel to address all of the recommendations made by ACCJC. It's a huge undertaking. The district must make some very hard decisions involving mission, facilities, personnel, collective bargaining, participatory governance, et cetera. This must be done very quickly while simultaneously developing plans to implement a threatened but unimaginable closure. I want to comment on one area discussed in the FICMAT report. Our AFT national, state, and local leaders are very proud of our local at City College of San Francisco, because through thirty years of collective bargaining, City College has emerged as the clear national leader in the fight for equity and respect for part-time faculty and for the protection and preservation of the college's full-time faculty core. City College of San Francisco is admired throughout American higher education and has been appropriately honored for its extraordinary accomplishments in this area. The college, through bargaining, has made bold choices. In San Francisco, closing the parity gap between full-time and part-time faculty has been a very high priority. Full-time salaries have fallen and are below the state median in San Francisco, California's highest-cost city. When course offerings were drastically reduced, full-timers and retirees teaching part-time, teaching part-time lost assignments before part-time faculty because of the district's commitment to treating part-timers as equal partners in the college's faculty. Other districts have coped with budget cuts by not replacing retirees and by negotiating
Your time's just about up.
Oh, okay. Well, then let me finish quickly. Some may question the choices the college has made in the name of educational quality and sustaining and supporting those who do the college's work. But in the California Federation of Teachers, we view some of these same decisions as an example of how the college let policy drive budget, not the other way around. And the policy of treating part-time faculty with real respect is part of what uplifts the quality of instruction and services at the college and ensures that all the college's faculty, not just a small group of part-time faculty, will be fully engaged in facing the challenge of getting the college's show cause sanction removed. Thank you.
Again, I'll speak as I're limited to three minutes. So Alicia Messer?
Good afternoon. I'll try to read quickly. My name is Alisa Messer. I'm president of AFT 2121. We represent the counselors, librarians, and instructors at City College of San Francisco, where I'm also an English teacher, teaching basic skills English and transfer-level English composition. City College, I know you all know this, is a pipeline to four-year institutions. We teach immigrants English. We serve as a lifeline for newly-retired veterans and boost the skills of un- and underemployed blue-collar workers so they can win increasingly, they can win increasingly knowledge-intensive jobs. That role has been essential to the city of San Francisco, and we heard about some of that this afternoon, and I really appreciate hearing everyone, even FICMAT, mention that. AFT 2121 does not believe that returning the district to fiscal stability necessitates abandoning the principles we, as a college, have collectively held dear of offering San Francisco's diverse students quality education or of valuing and sustaining those who work to ensure that our students are well-served. At an institution that has, in some cases, as you've heard today, been slow to make smart changes, piloting web-based grading for ten years rather than helping all faculty make the switch sooner comes to mind. We also do well to remember that there are areas where we can do better. Some fiscal solutions, after all, are better than others. Change is not bad on principle, and maintaining our accreditation is essential. But all too often, reforms are made thoughtlessly or pushed for the wrong reasons. We believe we can make and will make constructive changes at City College without abandoning the need to serve our students or just an equitable labor principles and practices. AFT 2121 believes in pay equity, access to health care, and full-time jobs. These labor values, embraced by both the union and the district over decades of negotiations, and noted and honored across the state and embodied in legislation as well, have helped make CCSF a better college, one that reflects the values, as you heard earlier, of San Francisco and the needs of our students and California's future. The faculty and staff at City College have demonstrated, as you also heard today, tremendous dedication and commitment. AFT 2121 has stepped up to the plate repeatedly over the last five years in order to help the college and maintain fiscal stability, and we are working now to ensure the college's success. Fortunately, the college is already making reforms that will benefit our students and make us better custodians of the community's resources. These thoughtful measures to improve enrollment and scheduling, streamline management, and implement improved technologies will make better use of available resources and have less damaging impacts on workers and students than other options that have been proposed. We really appreciate the involvement and support of the Board of Governors and the fact that you took the time to hear about City College today and ask good questions. And in particular, we want to thank interim Chancellor Eric Skinner for your interest and concern in seeing City College make it through this challenging period. And I know we will make it through the challenging period. Thank you.
Sagino.
Sagino? City College of San Francisco, sorry.
My name's Karen Sagino, and I'm president of the Academic Senate at City College. I want to add my thanks to others for your taking the time to listen to our troubles this afternoon and your commitment to helping us through this. As president of the Academic Senate, I'm one of the folks that's very committed to making sure that we, that we do what we need to do to get accreditation. We have been working collaboratively with folks across the college. The items of the recommendations that are particularly the focus of faculty, such as student learning outcomes and some of the shared governance issues, we have been, as you know, working very hard on. You heard about our asking for an extra flex day and following through to make sure that happened. I heard earlier questions about, you know, what will you personally do to make sure things happen? And my commitment is that, you know, to make sure things happen, and if they're not being done by somebody else, I'll just dump in and do them if they're within my purview. If they're not, to make sure that that information gets to the folks that need it. As you know, we have not always made the best decisions in the past. So it is important that we all work together collaboratively to make sure we make the best decisions for the future. There was certainly a point where there was sort of a mode of panic at City College, just like, oh, we must do something. We've got, what do we do? Oh, we'll do this, you know? And we are gradually getting to a state where it's like, well, we do have to make sure that the decisions we make now are really the best decisions for the future, that we don't, for instance, make decisions that might look good for our budget for the short one, but would just change us from one kind of structural deficits to other kinds of structural deficits. So we all have a lot of work ahead of us to work collaboratively and make sure that we do come up with the best decisions to move us forward. But as you can see, the faculty are very committed to doing whatever it takes and to making sure that we're there to serve the students. Even the folks who have criticized us the most comment on how dedicated the folks of City College are to student learning, and that is really what drives us. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think that's it.
There are no more speakers.
No more speakers. Board members, any final comments? Any new business? Okay, Chancellor Skinner, I would ask again that you keep the whole board informed as you monitor the progress of City College of San Francisco. Let us know who your special trustee selection is, if you get that to the board as well. And then, as I said earlier, I'm going to request that whoever that special trustee be, be at our November meeting to give us a status report. And with that, meeting adjourned.